And our broadcast.
Thank you, Andy. This is Rob Champetti, Chairman of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals. Good evening, everyone and members of the ZBA, and welcome to the Newburyport, the City of Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for our agenda hearing evening of July 13th, 2021. We have a published start of 7:00 PM, but in the interest of allowing as many people as possible the opportunity to log on, we're going to take a few moments before we formally kick things off, and probably just a minute or two as folks start to file in. I will begin by opening the meeting under our agenda. We'll, I'll go through a quick introduction of the members of the board and members of the city planning office that are in attendance this evening. Then we will take our roll call, establish a quorum. And before we get into our public hearings under Section 2 of our meeting agenda, I will take a moment, as I like to do, to walk everyone through the lay of the land, as I like to say, basically, the rules of the virtual Zoom zoning board meeting road. We'll just go through the flow and format of what to expect in the event that there are folks here this evening who may not have participated on an online city board hearing. We'll just let you know how we will conduct our business. Then we'll get into the first agenda item. Andy, can you, I don't seem to see our participants yet, and I'm wondering if...
I see about 12 or so in the room, a few others seem to be populating.
Okay, got it. I can see them now, too. Okay. Well, so with that, it's 7:03. I see about 12 folks, including our eight panelists. So allow me to begin. We're going to open our City of Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for the hearing date of July 13th, 2021. I'll begin by just introducing myself and my colleagues on the board, as well as members of the planning office in attendance. We have this evening Mark Moore, our Vice Chair, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our Secretary, Mr. Ken Swanton, member, Mr. Walter Shannon, member, and our Associate Member, Mr. Gregory Bennet. Also in attendance this evening is, of course, our Planning Director, Mr. Andy Port, our City Planner, Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, and our Keeper of the Minutes, Ms. Gretchen Joy. Again, my name is Rob Champetti, and I'm the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So what we will do is I will go through and take our roll call. We'll establish a quorum. I'll then establish for the record who our five voting members will be this evening. And then we'll go into the rules of the road and jump right into the public hearings. So starting with our roll call, and I'll just call your name, members of the zoning board of appeals, please respond in your attendance by saying either here or present. Mark Moore.
Present.
Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Ken Swanton. Mr. Walter Shannon. Walt, I can, Bud, I can see, I can see you. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
I am here, sorry.
Excellent. And Gregory Bennet?
Present.
Present. And so we have Ken Swanton is absent. So our five voting members, and my name is Rob Champetti, I'm also present. So we have one, two, three, four, five members of the ZBA in attendance. I'm sorry. Six members of the ZBA in attendance. Our five voting members will be myself, Mark Moore, Stephen Delisle, Walter Shannon, and our Associate Member Gregory Bennet will be a full voting member this evening. And we have, I think I just named all six of us. Did I, did I not? We have, five voting members are going to be Rob Champetti, Mark Moore, Stephen Delisle, Walter Shannon, Gregory Bennet. Okay, so members of the ZBA, and for those in attendance, the quick walkthrough of what we're going to do now that we've established a quorum. I'll just quickly go through what we do, and then we'll jump right into the business of this evening, beginning with our agenda item, and we'll just go through the sequence. Essentially, the zoning board of appeals, what we'll do in our sequence is we begin each hearing in the public hearing section. I will read the public notice by the applicant name, the address, the docket number, and the relief being requested, whether it's a variance, dimensional variance, special permit, special permit for nonconformities, et cetera. And then just a brief description which describes what the applicant seeks. Once I've read the public notice aloud from the agenda, we'll then turn the floor over to the applicant or the applicant's representatives to present the application. The application will be presented, that portion, once complete, we'll then close that portion of the public hearing. And then we go to questions, the public comment section. The public comment section is when we will invite members of the public who wish to make any comment at all, whether you want to speak in support of, in opposition to, or simply speak. Don't worry about which column to be in. We don't any longer separate those lanes. So just simply raise your hand by clicking the bottom of your Zoom screen, the raise hand button. We'll see your hand raised. I'll recognize you, and Mr. Port will then unmute your mic. You will need to also click the bottom left of your Zoom screen to unmute your mic. Your mic should be green, indicating that we can hear you. And if we can ask you to just give your full name and your address so that our Keeper of the Minutes, Ms. Joy, can record that information. And then we ask finally that you keep your remarks and comments to a two-minute maximum, if possible. I often will grant some latitude as needed. We try to be courteous to all of the folks that wish to speak, and so that we can keep things moving. We ask folks to kindly govern themselves accordingly. We'll, I'll also offer up a reminder if we're getting long in the tooth on any comment section. So that's essentially it, and there'll be a slide just reminding you of those rules of the road on the public comment section. Once we've, once we've recognized every raised hand, we'll then, and only then, close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. Questions from the board can be posed in sequence by every member of the ZBA. And what I do is I run through the roll, and members of the ZBA will post questions to the applicant, the applicant's representatives, their lawyers, engineers, architects. They will often also use that opportunity to adapt questions that have been voiced during the public comment section. So when you do make members of the public, when you're making public comment, we ask you to kindly do not address any question expecting a response. Just simply address your question, and know that members of the board will be taking notes. And if they share that question or have further questions based on that, they're going to adapt your questions and ask for that follow-on information. So that's, that's how that works into the process. Once we finish questions from the board, we'll then close that portion of the public hearing, and we go into deliberations. Deliberations is essentially when, when you listen to, and by you, I mean the collective you, members of the audience, as well as anyone else listening, just essentially hear the ZBA think out loud. And we deliberate the legal criteria of what's being requested by the applicant, whether it's been met, any other issues or further questions we might have. And we go through each member of the ZBA in deliberating whether the applicant has met the applicant's burden in demonstrating that they meet the criteria to allow for the relief. After the close of the deliberations, I close that portion of the public hearing, and then we go to a vote. Under a modified form of Robert's Rules of Order, we will elicit a motion to approve. That doesn't mean that whichever member makes that motion to approve plans to actually vote in favor of that application. It's simply the mechanism offered in the affirmative as a motion to approve that gets that motion on the table. That motion's then seconded. Once the motion to approve is made and seconded, we then call the roll. And in order for an application to be successful, four members of the five must vote in the affirmative. If four members of the five vote in the affirmative, the motion carries and the application's approved. And essentially, that is the lay of the land. So without any further ado, we're going to go into our public hearings and begin with the first application, which we have received a request to continue. This is the application of Brendan Johnson and Christina Krill-Johnson, 65 Curzon Mill Road. It's a dimensional variance request. It is continued from the hearing of May 25th, and the applicant's representatives have requested that the board take up their request to continue further to the meeting of August 24th. Do we have a motion or any comments from the members of the ZBA? And if not, do we have a motion to continue? Any, any member of the ZBA, we need, will need a motion to continue to August 24th, if I can get a motion.
Hey, this is Bud Shagnon. I'll make a motion to continue the variance application of 65 Curzon Mill Road, docket 2021-06, to August 24th, 21.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Motion's made. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. This is Mr. Delisle.
Okay, thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Shannon, seconded by Mr. Delisle, calling the vote. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recused from this, I'm abstaining from this vote.
No, no problem. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's four in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries, and the application is for 65 Curzon Mills, continued to the hearing of August 24th. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving to the next full application, this matter is the application of John and Beverly Murphy, trustees, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, and Costa. The application has been continued from the hearing of June 8th, 2021, on the property located at 3 Marsh Street, docket 2021-30. This is a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals and permits to construct in addition to the first floor of a pre-existing nonconforming single-family structure. And may we hear in continuation from Attorney Mead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, Costa, 30 Green Street in Newburyport. And with me this evening is John and Beverly Murphy, with me figuratively speaking, of course. And just to remind the board, we are here for a special permit to modify the Murphy's home so their master bedroom can be on the first floor, which will allow them to age in place in their home, which they built for themselves almost 45 years ago. Jack has lived on the island since 1960. Conveniently, their son Brett lives across the street, or actually next door. So it's actually a perfect situation for them to be able to age in place. Since we were here last, Jack and Beverly have been busy with the Conservation Commission and have received their order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. In doing so, they made some changes to the plans, both at the request of the commission, and it reflects some of the comments that were made at the last zoning board meeting in June. So we believe that based upon those changes, the board can find that the extension, the FAR, in order to put the master bedroom on the first floor, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or to the pyod. So if you can go to the first slide, please. So what we've done, the proposal before the board this evening, is we've actually reduced the request to increase the FAR from our original request of 43.7% to 41%. We have removed the existing shed on the property, which removes 189 square feet of FAR from the property for a new net increase of 232 square feet, which is solely the addition. And that reduces the proposed FAR to the 41%. Further, at the request of the Conservation Commission, and in consideration of the removal of the shed, the applicant intends to remove a portion of the existing pavers on the lot as well. And then before I show you the revised site plan, I just want to clarify something. I think there's a, there was confusion on our part in the initial memo that we sent to the board. But I want to be clear that the house, and I'll show you in a minute, remains a two-bedroom home, not a three-bedroom home. So it has two bedrooms today, and given the reconfiguration, it will continue to have two bedrooms moving forward. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So as you can see, the changes are with the front yard setback, because the addition is on the front, will be reduced and intensified. And then the FAR will be intensified as well. Otherwise, there are no other modifications to the existing nonconformities. If you could go to the next slide, please. So as you can see, here's the revised site plan. And the, on the left is the existing conditions, and on the right are the proposed conditions. You'll see the removal of the shed on the right, and the removal of that little entrance into the shed on the end of the walkway. There is still a little bit of the walkway left so that there's a path of travel off of the driveway. But otherwise, those two items are removed. And then you see in the orangish color on the right, the addition, which is on the street side and away from the marsh of the proposed modification to the structure. If you go to the next slide, please, Andy. So the other thing that we didn't have last time, and I think that will be helpful to the board, because there was some confusion about what the changes were going to be, is we didn't have the existing floor plan. So Jack drew the existing floor plans. And in this drawing, you can see there is a guest bedroom that exists at the bottom right-hand corner of this slide. It has a closet and the entrance into the hallway, and then there's an existing full bath on the first floor. So if you can go to the next slide, please. And the next one? So here, I tried to delineate more carefully where the addition is. So the yellow line shows the difference between the new and the old. And you can see the hallway into the new master bedroom is now made by removing a portion of the closet and turning the bathroom. So what's important, and there was also a question about that half bath. So the half bath will continue to serve the living space. But the shower that was in what was the full bath in that same space is now turned into the master bath area. So essentially, from a bathroom point of view, there's only the addition of the sink and the toilet in the new section. And then you see the closet, and there's room for a washer and dryer as you walk into the bathroom in the new addition so that they can do laundry on the first floor. And then you have the new master bedroom. So that area in the front that used to be the guest bedroom, there's no closet in there anymore, so it's not a bedroom. But in addition, it's quite small. It will be used for storage, given the loss of the shed and the need to have storage space on the first floor. So, and then I guess I'll go to the next slide, please, Andy, and the next slide. So there's no change. Here's the existing conditions. That's the same as the last time that you saw. And if you could go to Slide 13, Andy. Again, there's no change to this elevation. And as Mr. Delisle pointed out before, as you look at that front bottom left, you're looking through to the bottom of the addition, because the addition is up on pilings. And so you see the existing wall and door to the back. So as the board is aware, we believe, as we've submitted, that this proposed change is not substantially more detrimental to the term substantially of first means to a great or significant extent. And the term detrimental means to cause harm. Here, the proposal does not rise to that level, in our opinion. We meet the purpose section of the pyod because the proposed addition is built over currently an area that is not vegetated, is the driveway, is up on pilings, and will continue to allow the free flow of any water and/or sand in the area. A 3.2% increase in FAR in this instance should not be considered as substantial or substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, given the construction. There's no impact on the natural environment, because it's actually improved, given the removal of the shed and the pavers. And new vegetation will be replacing the hardscape and the structure that's being removed. The improvement to the proposal will allow, as I said before, free flow of sand and/or floodwaters around the property in an appropriate manner. And further, the new construction, as I said, will be built over the existing gravel drive and not impact dune or other existing vegetation and functions. And finally, the new construction will be built in conformance with the current FEMA construction standards. None of these changes will be, to a great or significant extent, cause harm to the neighborhood or the pyod. As I said before, I just reviewed unclarified of the addition and what the uses actually are in that addition and in the existing structure, and how the applicant is reusing the tub and not doubling up on that and making it more convenient for single-floor living for Jack and Beverly. Finally, I would like to point out to the board, while I certainly respect the comments from the planning department, and they are advocating for what they believe is the appropriate position. As I've noted to this board before on projects on Plum Island, it's not appropriate to speculate about future unknown circumstances relative to growth and development in the pyod. In the case of Fitzsimmons versus the Board of Appeals of Chatham, the plaintiffs in that case sought a special permit to construct an addition to convert a summer cottage into more of a house. The zoning board denied that based upon detriment to the neighborhood, as it would quote, "be difficult in the future to refuse the plaintiff's permission for year-round occupancy." The appeals court disagreed with the zoning board and stated, and I quote, "We think the board erred when it took into account, as bearing upon a present decision, a putative problem to be faced in the indefinite future upon now uncertain facts." So while I respect the planning's board's position, it is the job of the board to decide the matter with the facts that are before it today. And we believe that the application is built in conformance with the purposes of the pyod. We have removed some offending structures on the property and allowed more vegetation and movement of sand and floodwaters. The addition is for the availability of first-floor living for a couple who have lived in this place for 45 years and wish to stay in there for a significantly more, longer period of time. With that, we request the board find that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the pyod. I remind the board that there have been submitted at the prior application five letters of support from all the neighbors in the area. And with that, we respectfully request the board's determination.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and open it up for public comments. And again, just reminding you, members of the, of the public that are in attendance, to kindly take note of the instructions for public comment that Andy Portis just put up, and just simply raise your hand. We'll recognize you, and you'll have two minutes, if you could. Anyone wish to speak in connection with the application? Seeing no hands. Going once, going twice. Seeing no members of the public looking to make public comment. I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll go to questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Mead, could you go, or Andy, could you go back a slide to the original floor layout?
I believe that's Slide, there, seven, maybe.
Seven. I just wanted to, to ask about the decision to need to bump out an entire section for this stay-in-place living. And was there any consideration of reconfiguring that living space as it is to make that the first floor? A more, I guess, luxurious space for, for the owners to live on the first floor?
Well, I don't know about luxurious, but this is, this is where all their living takes place. So you can see the kitchen, the dining room, the family room. And so, you know, the guest bedroom there is not large enough for, really, for, you know, a master bedroom. And the goal was to be able to provide enough space for Beverly and Jack to live on the first floor, you know, including adding laundry there so that they don't have to go up and downstairs for that either, extended stairs. So yes, they looked at it, but the space just, it just doesn't, it's just not large enough, and they would lose, you know, general living space.
Right. And then the reason that there was confusion on bedrooms going from two to three is that the space left over, if the addition was put on, really wouldn't be usable as a bedroom?
It's not usable as a bedroom. That's correct. And that was my mistake. It's not usable as a bedroom. That, I didn't understand the flow into the new room so that closet disappears in that door that leads, there's two closets there. You can actually see. There's a bathroom closet at the end of that existing hallway, and then there's a closet into the bedroom. Those both go away, obviously, when the hallway goes in and the bathroom is reconfigured.
That's all I have for now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Attorney Mead, just to, to sort of review the bidding here, Andy, maybe going down to Slide number nine would be helpful. So we're going to end up with the new bedroom, the old bedroom that now has no closet, that won't be a bedroom anymore, the sort of new half-bath, and then the master full bath. Is that all correct?
That's correct. And my client just texted me to say that the existing first floor is 520 square feet. That's it. So you could, that will tell you how small that room is that's now kind of a storage area.
Okay. And then just again, to, to review, the extension that will be added is all over the existing sort of gravel parking area and will be up on pilings.
That is correct.
And I think based on my math, it looks like we're going from, with the new proposal, we're going from an original proposal of a 16% increase in FAR down to only about a 9% increase in the FAR. So I think, I think that, those are my only questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Shannon. Bud, we're going to need you, you'll want to unmute your mic. We will come back to Mr. Shannon on questions, and Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I, my colleagues have addressed the concerns I had. I just want to, just for one point of confirmation. We are adding, are you proposing to add one sink, one toilet, and no bedrooms? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And can you calculate, I heard Mr. Delisle's calculation. I wanted you to confirm the, the calculation on the FAR in terms of, you could do it any number of ways.
Yeah, I can't, I'm not going to do it Mr. Delisle's way, because he, I'm not, I'm going to tell you what the numbers are. How's that? How's it? So the proposed FAR is 41%. The existing FAR is 37.8. And what we had proposed last time was 43.7.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Very helpful. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I have no additional questions, other than what my colleagues have already asked, and we've had answers for. I'll try once more. Mr. Shannon, do you have any questions? Do you wish to be heard on questions before we close this portion? I still see, Bud, I still see your mic not open, so it's still muted. But we'll circle back. But for now, I'm going to close that portion of the public hearing and go into deliberations. And again, this is a special permit for nonconformities. So we'll ask the board to tailor deliberations around the legal criteria. And of course, we have reference to that, thanks to the work of our planning department as a guide. It's certainly not an end-all-be-all, but it's certainly a very, very useful guide in tailoring our deliberations around the legal criteria. So we'll go into deliberations, and we'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, am on the Mr. Delisle math train. As far as a raw number change in FAR, it's a small number, but a percentage change, it's bigger. So that's where he's coming from, percentage change. It is about a 9% increase, but it was about double that before. So I certainly appreciate the changes made to attempt to address the FAR. Because really, it's the biggest hurdle, I think, in getting, getting over the more detrimental to the pyod. While I'm sensitive to the fact that staying in place and, you know, aging in the house that you built many years ago is reasonable, I still struggle with the fact that the, the structure itself is already 50% over the FAR, and then they just want to push it, push it, they would like to add to this, you know, another 9%. So I'm, I'm still struggling with this. Mitigating that is the fact that it is raised, it is going to be over the existing driveway. So I look forward to listening to some of the deliberations and, and seeing which way the importance of the FAR may be, be able to be mitigated with me. But right now, I'm still struggling with the FAR. That's where I am right now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Mr. Moore seeing the math my way. I, my... I, my emphasis on looking at it that way wasn't to emphasize the the large increase as proposed, but to note that it was smaller than what was proposed last time. And last time, I was somewhat more sanguine with the FAR than some of my colleagues. And I remain so this time. I do feel the fact that we, this proposed addition to the structure is up on stilts and over an existing parking area does, in fact, in my mind, mitigate the sort of detriment to the pyod. So I am, I am more sanguine on the pyod issue, I believe, than Mr. Moore was. So that's where, that's where I am on this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Channon.
Yes, and I'm sorry I dropped off for a second there.
No worries. Welcome back.
Thank you. I guess I have to agree, I do appreciate the applicant changing the effect on the FAR. I know that was a, that was a bone of contention for most of us during the last meeting. Appreciate that. And the addition is up on stilts. I can support the application. Again, I'm not a fan of putting in the FAR, you know, too much, but I think this is a modest increase. They're already over, I understand. But I guess for the size of the existing home and what they're proposing in square feet and the fact that it's still, I can support it. I think a 0.41 FAR is acceptable in my mind. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Channon. And Mr. Bennet.
I am on board with Mr. Delisle and his view on the FAR as a touchstone here. I'm not as much concerned about the FAR calculation. And I totally, I certainly don't disagree with Mr. Delisle's calculation. I just needed a clarification on it, his math was spot on. But in any event, in these kinds of projects on Plum Island, my concern turns more towards impacts on water, wastewater, and those various environmental issues. So what we have here is an additional sink, an additional toilet, no expansion by way of an additional bedroom. I look at our standard here and we, you know, the standard is the change, any change is, must be substantially more detrimental if we are to turn our backs on it. I can conclude that I don't see that here. It may be marginally more detrimental with the addition of another toilet and sink. Although, on the other hand, we're not expanding the number of people who are living in this home. And it's already a two-family home. So I, I become increasingly concerned about these cumulative effects and impacts on Plum Island. But I think, given the way our zoning ordinance is structured and our test here that we have to apply, I believe that this application satisfies the criteria.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennet. I have to say, I agree with my colleagues. And for the most part, while it is a, an increase in the FAR, it's a nominal increase. And I moved by the fact that, you know, in the many, many years I've seen applications on Plum Island, it's very rare when folks are not out in force, you know, to be heard with respect to any impact on the island. I find it refreshing and obviously perhaps a reflection, at least in my mind, a reflection of the sensitivity of the application when we have not only no, you know, objections by butters, but rather, you know, some offers of support. So I always take that sort of real-time, on-the-ground neighborhood impact as one of the more powerful, you know, litmus's, or litmus on the, on an application. So I too can support it. And let's see, with that, we can close the deliberations portion of the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve?
Greg Bennet, I will move to approve application number 2021-33, Marsh Street, for special permit for nonconformities.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet.
This is Mr. Delisle, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Bennet, seconded by Mr. Delisle, calling the role on the motion to approve. Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Channon?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that is four in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries, and the special permit for nonconformities is approved. Thank you all, and thank you, Attorney Mead.
Thank you very much. On behalf of my clients, they're very appreciative. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next public hearing. This is the public hearing by the application of Patrick Nussius. The property address of 163 Crow Lane. The application is docket 2021-36, a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits to raise an existing house and reconstruct a new single-family home with a garage. May we hear from the applicant? And my apologies if I've mispronounced your last name.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Attorney Douglas DeShane, representing Mr. Nussius.
Thank you, Attorney DeShane. You have the floor.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening, Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson, representing Mr. Nussius. Mr. Nussius is here with us this evening, as well as Gene Allen from JMA Architects, who is the architect on the project. Thank you very much, Mr. Ford, for putting that up. If we could move to the first slide. With respect to the project summary, the proposed project is to raise the existing three-bedroom on the lot. However, we are proposing to preserve and reconstruct on the existing foundation. We will reconstruct, are proposing to reconstruct a new four-bedroom home with an attached garage and that we believe the proposed reconstruction will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing structure. Go to the next slide, please. With respect to the existing conditions, the property has been and will continue to be used as a single-family residence. As we know, a single-family residence isn't allowed use within the R1 zoning district. The existing structure is pre-existing non-conforming as to the side A setback. We currently have an 11-foot setback from the left-hand side of the existing home, while 20 feet is required. The lot itself is also pre-existing non-conforming as to area and frontage. As you can see, there is 16,500 square feet provided. So it's a substantially large lot, but does not meet the 20,000-square-foot requirement. And with respect to frontage, we do have 100 feet where 125 feet is required. If we could go to the next slide, please. The proposed addition structure will conform to the height, lot coverage, open space, front setbacks, sides B setbacks, and rear setback requirements. So the new structure will conform to all dimensional requirements. The proposed addition will not create any new nonconformities, but as we presented in our application, it would result in an upward extension of the pre-existing non-conforming side A yard setback. The proposed structural increase exceeds 500 square feet, which is why we are here before the board in addition to the upward extension. The existing structure is 2186 square feet and the proposed structure would be 4698. I will note, however, that in calculating those sizes, we did include all of the living space and the attic space in that it exceeds six feet in ceiling height. So it includes the first floor, basement, second floor, and the attic as well. The proposed addition will raise the height of the existing structure from less than 20 feet to 29 feet when completed. Next slide, please. This is just a printout of the dimensional requirements. And as you can see, we've provided the required existing and proposed. And as I said, the only pre-existing non-conforming situation with respect to the proposed structure will be that side A setback. Next slide, please. I'm just going to run through a quick series of pictures so the board can get some, you know, an understanding of how the house sits. As you can see, the house, this is in the yellow is the proposed house, existing home and lot. You can see it's pretty consistent with the other lots in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Here's a picture of the house from the front. The next slide would be the, sort of a somewhat aerial view. As you can see, the pool in the back in the lot. And this gives you a perspective with respect to the relevant location of the house relative to its neighbors. Next slide, please. Here's a back view. And the next slide is the side view from the rear. And then the final picture is, again, a higher elevation rear aerial view showing that there is a substantial yard and area for the home. Next slide, please. This is the existing conditions. And again, just quickly, you can see that our one nonconformance is on the side A, where we are at 11 feet. Next slide, please. Here is the proposed addition in sort of this greenish-yellow color. You can see that in addition to adding a second story onto the existing foundation, we are proposing in addition to the right and a small entrance canopy, both of which will meet the required front and side setback requirements. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of the, of the home as proposed. I will run through these quickly, gentlemen. If you do have any questions on the architecture, as I said, Ms. Allen is here to address those. But this is the proposed front elevation. The next slide is the left-side elevation, which is the side that will face the closest neighbor, if you will. The next slide shows the right-side elevation, which does meet all required setbacks. And the rear elevation is here and it too will meet all setbacks. Next slide, please. Again, this is just a building section showing you the heights and how the floors are arranged. Next slide. This is the proposed first-floor plan. You can see the attached proposed garage and the proposed front entranceway. Otherwise, that footprint of the first floor is consistent with the existing home as it's being built on the existing footprint. The next slide represents the second-floor plan. And this is where our bedrooms will be located and bathrooms. You can see that there are three bedrooms in the second-floor addition over the existing foundation. And the master bedroom will be located over the garage addition. Next slide, please. And then this is the attic floor plan. There is a significantly large storage area up there. We did count this area in our square footage as it does have a ceiling height exceeding six feet in that center area as delineated by the, you know, the dock lines showing from the roof. Next slide. I do want to mention that we did, we did receive a recommendation from the tree commission. There are no sidewalks on either side of Crow Lane, so there was no recommendation with respect to sidewalk improvements. However, there was a recommendation from the tree commission that we should provide three additional small flowering trees. And there was a proposed species evenly spaced across the front of the property. I understand that this species is a lower growing species, so we won't have to worry about any interference with power lines or anything in the future. And my client has agreed, will agree to provide those trees as recommended by the tree commission. Next slide, please. This, gentlemen, is just, you know, a reiteration of your zoning ordinances and the standard of review, which we need to meet. And if we could go to the last slide, I will apply those. The existing and proposed use is allowed in the zone. There will be no new conformities created by this proposed reconstruction. The proposed house meets the height, lot coverage, open space regulations, as well as, that should read B-side and rear-side setbacks. Although the home is increasing in size, the home will not significantly impose on the surrounding homes as it is located centrally in the lot and with one exception, meets all required setbacks and height limitations. The proposal is to reconstruct the home with top-quality, energy-efficient materials and methodology, which will certainly minimize impacts on the surrounding environment and on the natural environment. The new home has been professionally designed. It will be a substantial aesthetic improvement to the home. The proposed structure is in keeping with a number of the surrounding homes, especially those like this home, which have been bought and redeveloped. These are older, smaller homes. And as we all know, the trend is to redevelop them and improve them in size. I do submit, and I believe you have a a series of photos of the surrounding neighborhood and the surrounding homes, which I'm happy to show to the board if they want to get a feel for the surrounding homes and what, how this home will compare. I will say that on Crow Lane, there are a significant number of ranches and split-level homes, although there are a number of larger homes that have been originally built or reconstructed. But as you move out into the surrounding neighborhood, there are a significant number of larger homes. And in fact, most of the homes are larger in the Virginia Lane area, the Winwood Drive and Bartlett Drive, which I, in considering the neighborhood, gentlemen, I like to think about, how far could I hit a golf ball and what are all the homes within that range look like? And there are a substantial number of homes this size or larger within that sort of neighborhood, as I define it. The proposed reconstruction is an aesthetic improvement to the structure and will certainly add value, not only to this lot and home, but to that of the surrounding homes and neighborhood. The improved property values will mean an increase in property taxes, which quite frankly benefits all residents. We will have little or no impact to the neighborhood, certainly not substantially more detrimental impacts. I would suggest that the only detrimental impact resulting from this is the impact to the neighbor to our left. My client has gone out and spoken with his neighbors in the Crow Lane area and has received no opposition, although I certainly respect any neighbors that may have comments tonight. But for the most part, he's received quite a bit of support. People are excited about the possibility of the homes in the neighborhood being upgraded and right, and raising the value in the, in the neighborhood. And lastly, I would say that we have, my client has spoken directly, at least twice, with the neighbor to the left, as I say, the one that would be most impacted. And we have discussed mitigation measurements, measures with that neighbor. Mr. Nussius is going to provide some fencing and some vegetated buffering and has agreed to preserve the existing trees sheltering that home. And so we feel we are in a very good place with our neighbor and that he is supportive of our proposal. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have. And as I said, Ms. Allen is here if there are any questions regarding the architectural design of the home. And Mr. Nussius is here as well.
All right, thank you, Attorney DeShane.
Thank you, Attorney DeShane. We will, we certainly will circle back to you on questions. So closing that portion of the public hearing, we will now move into the public comment section. And again, Andy Port, our planning director, is going to put up the slide that you'll see with instructions on public comment. We ask folks to just kindly govern yourselves respectfully when it comes to the amount of time. We ask that you try to stay close to two minutes. And with that, we will recognize anyone who wishes to speak, starting with Mr. Moreland. I see a hand raised. Dennis Moreland, if you wish to just unmute your mic, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is John Moreland, and my wife, Mary Ellen, and I live at 161 Crow Lane, and we are the abutters to the left side of the property, which is the non-conforming side. We have spoken with Patrick Nessius, the new owner, and as stated by the attorney, he has satisfied any concerns we had with regard to the project. We've had several enjoyable conversations with him, and as a result, we have no objections to this request. We believe that this will be an improvement to the neighborhood and ask that the board vote in favor of this special application.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moreland. Anyone else wish to speak in, in connection with this application? And I see a hand, let's see, oh, I just saw it go away. Any other hands going once, going twice? Let's see.
They're objecting to us supporting it.
I saw a hand go up for a moment. Just want to make sure that wasn't someone trying to raise their hand. Okay, so seeing no further hands, I will close that portion of the public hearing, and we will now move into questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the applicant's attorney, I'm sorry if I forgot your name. I just had a question on, you did provide a bunch of photos of surrounding homes that, like you said, was in, I guess, a decent golf shot of the home. But I wonder if you could go to a few of those photos, and I don't know if you have addresses or you know, some, a couple of particular comps that you threw up and where they're located.
I know that, and I, I would ask whether Mr. Port has that secondary package of photos that I submitted. I apologize, they were just submitted today.
But of the ones that we saw in this presentation are that were?
Oh, there it is. Great. Thank you. If you could go up to that first slide, actually. Oh, and I'm sorry, this isn't as easy to see.
So well, I guess, in the transfer, but I guess it was meant to be a neighborhood context image, I guess.
Yeah, what it showed here is that you can see the, the location of the 163 Crow Lane is showed by the red balloon there. So I took photos along, a couple of photos along Crow Lane, but then I did move down Crow Lane and went up through Virginia and around through Bartlett and then over to, I'm sorry, let me get my thing so I can read it. I then went into Winwood and then Longfellow. And those neighborhoods, as you may know, are certainly newer neighborhoods and contain homes of substantial size, actually quite large. As I said, the homes along Crow Lane, majority of them are ranches and splits, although there are a couple of homes, especially two at the, so there's, there's our home at 163. The next house is the entrance to Crow Lane, and you can see the house across the way. The gray house is substantial size. I think the next picture is a different view of that. Yeah, it's a substantial home. The next slide is again that one, because it was so large and at the entrance to the roadway. The next one is the home on the other side of the entrance to Crow Lane, and I think I provided you a couple of pictures of that. That's the view from Crow Lane. This is one of the splits. This is a typical split, as I saw, found on Crow Lane. And also, the, this is one of the homes in the area as I started to move down to Virginia Avenue. And the next homes are just taken randomly as I traveled down Virginia and eventually swung on to Bartlett Drive. You know, a lot of them are two stories, two car garages, some of them have additions. In fact, once you got into that, those other neighborhoods, there were no ranches, there were no splits, they're all homes of substantial size. I believe this is when I started to get into the Winwood Drive neighborhood, which is one street over. They are huge, beautiful, large homes, and that is the home at the corner of Winwood and Turkey Hill Road, which is the, you know, the street of budding or across from Crow Lane. So the surrounding neighborhoods are substantial in size, and I suspect that as homes are improved upon along Crow Lane and Goldsmith, they will certainly move, maybe not to this, this size, but certainly consistent with what we see happening on Crow Lane now and in what Mr. Nessius is proposing, you know, four bedrooms, two to three bedroom homes with garages.
Understood. That's fair enough. And then I wondered if, and I know you've had good conversations, and Mr. Moreland attests to this, to that fact, but I just wonder for, for our record, if you could maybe provide a little more detail verbally as to what vegetation and fencing has been discussed.
Sure. We are going to replace an existing fence that, that is there between the properties now. We are, have agreed to maintain the large, I think it's a birch tree that's existing on that side of the lot. And we also are proposing to provide a row of arborvitae's that will essentially create a more solid vegetated line between the two homes. So the, the other thing I think I can mention, and maybe Mr. Moreland will comment, is that I do understand that that side of his home only has one small window. So we will not, you know, although our home will be taller, it's not like we will be looking down into or across into, you know, bedroom windows or other living spaces. There's just one small. So between the fence improvement, the arborvitae's, and preserving the existing trees that is there, it's a larger tree, I think we'll be able to create a, a pretty solid vegetated buffer. And again, what we will be buffering really is the, the view to the, to the house, which only has one window on that side of the house in any event.
Thank you very much. That's all I have for now.
Okay, Mr. Moore, thank you. Then moving to Mr. Delaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions. The number, Mr. DeShane, that you gave for the, the square footage was 4,698, but then you indicated that that included the attic and the basement. Could you answer these questions for me regarding that number? Did that include the garage bays also, or was that left out of the calculation?
It doesn't include the garage floor bay, but it does include the second story.
Sure. Okay.
Because in reading the regulations, that was the only area, I believe, that you don't have to count, and that is the garage floor.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. And so notwithstanding the regulation, do you know what the, what the living space is? The excluding, excluding the basement and the attic, the first and second floor living space?
Gene, maybe you can help me out with that, but a quick calculation is that the, the first floor, which is being built over the, over the existing foundation, I believe, was somewhere around 1,093 square feet. Then the second floor, which does, you know, cover that and then goes over to the garage, was somewhere around 1,500 square feet. So the total there would be 1525, about 2,600 square feet. Then when you start to add the basement and the 700 square feet in the attic that I counted because of the ceiling height, that's what gets you to the, to the 4,600. So in terms of living space, first and second floor, including the area over the garage, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable in estimating that to be approximately 2,600 square feet. Gene, would you agree with that? I don't know if Ms. Allen is unmuted. But, but I am, I am confident in those numbers, sir, because I did, and for the existing home, you know, we, again, because we're preserving that foundation, I was, I, I know that first floor is 1,093, and then the second floor is 1,500 with the garage.
Okay, and that's, that's helpful information. the next question I wanted to ask, and this may go to the architect as well, could, could somebody speak to sort of the, the materials that will be used on the exterior, the windows, et cetera?
Perhaps Mr. Nessius can speak to that as well. Patrick?
Hi. Good evening. Yes, the exterior siding is going to be cedar clapboards. The gables will be board and battened, and the windows will be the black-trimmed windows along with, with the black roof.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you. I think those are the, that's the extent of my questions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Delaw, thank you. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Delaw asked my, my questions with concern of this square footage, but I guess I'll, I'll dive a little bit deeper with that. Using the calculations that we just discussed, the living area is somewhere in the vicinity of 2,600 square feet. Will the basement be finished for the first phase of this construction?
No.
Okay. And then, secondly, will the attic be finished, or will the attic just be storage space?
It will be finished.
So the attic will be finished as a living space?
It will be finished in the extent that it will be dry-walled and painted, and it will have a carpet floor.
Okay. So we, we could actually count that as living space then?
Yes, sir. That would be approximately 700 square feet, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so that would still put the total living space of this dwelling around 3,300.
Correct, sir.
Okay. Yeah, and thank you. That helps a lot, because, you know, at first blush, when you see 4,600 square feet, you're thinking of a McMansion of tremendous proportion. And this is actually somewhat of a modest, large house. It's not, it's not as big as some of the pictures you showed us. All right, thank you, Chair. No other questions.
All right, Mr. Chen, thank you. And Mr. Bennet?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with a few questions following up on my colleague, Mr. Moore. Attorney DeShane, the, the first house that you, photo, the photo here of the house, I guess on the corner?
Yep.
Can you tell me, I mean, what club would you have to hit to get into the front yard of that house?
That house, I believe, is, is three houses up. So from this picture, if we look to the left, we can see the, the neighbor to the left, we can see partial roof of the next house, and then you hit the house at the corner. So based on, it's about 200, 250 feet.
Okay.
From our lot to the entrance of Crow Lane.
Got you. And when you scroll through these photos, would that be the, the house that is the closest to your client's home here?
It'll be, it's the closest of the pictures that I showed, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Bennet. I, I have to say, I don't have any further questions. It sounds like all of my colleagues have had their masks unanswered, so I thank you for that. And with that, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we can move into deliberations. This is a special permit for non-conformities, and so as such, we should tailor our deliberations around the, the criteria for the special permit for non-conformities. And with that, we will go into deliberations, beginning with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, clearly, when, in looking at this proposal, it's been well-stated in what, in what we've seen, that there, there are no new non-conformities here. And in fact, it's only an extension of the side setback A. And there's been good discussions with the abutter to that said, setback. And, and that's good to hear, that there's a, there's great communication and, and there's, there's no complaints there. And in fact, they're working together to, to include fencing and, and vegetation. And, you know, with that said, even though it's a big change to the existing home, I would imagine that most of the pictures that were shown probably started as a house like this. And, and I guess it's kind of the natural progression of some neighborhoods. Eventually, I think they all get expanded upon to some extent. And I think that it was very helpful with colleagues, you know, fleshing out exactly what the living space was. So I don't see, I mean, I don't see, there are new, new non-conformities, just a, an extension of an existing one. It's got support from the closest abutting neighbor. I can't see this being more, more detrimental to the neighborhood, even though it is a big change. I, I can support this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, I would concur with Mr. Moore that there are no new non-conformities here. I'm a little bit concerned about the, the size of the, of the new structure relative to some of the other structures in the neighborhood. So that gives me a little bit of pause, but I don't think it's sufficient to, to make the determination that it would be more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I think despite its, you know, certainly going up and over and, and, you know, acquiring or adding a great deal of square footage to, to the, to the proposed structure on this lot, I think it, we, you know, we're right on the, right on the line here. So I think that I'm, I'm able to support this application.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delaw. Mr. Chen?
Thank you, Chair. I have to agree with my colleagues. I, I think for mass and scaling, it's, it's, it is going to be much larger than the, you know, the small ranches in the vicinity. But again, and looking at the rest of the Newbury Port, some of the surrounding homes and some of the additions we've seen put on homes, it, it ends up being a moderately large house. It's ginormous. The biggest scale factor that bothered me, like Mr. Delaw, was the height. It's, you know, it's, it's more than two stories in comparison to a ranch. But, but as Mr. Moore said, I think this is how, how homes are going to evolve in, in the future. And with that said, I can, I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen, and Mr. Bennet.
I, I tend to echo these comments of my colleagues. I believe this is an aesthetic improvement, at least to my eye. It appears to be tastefully done. The materials seem to be of quality and will enhance generally the neighborhood. It's clear, as we've all identified, that this mass and scaling, certainly it's much larger than the homes right next door. However, viewed more broadly throughout the neighborhood, it certainly is not, would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighbors. And I'm heartened by the applicants reaching out to the neighbor and Mr. Moreland's response and their cooperative efforts to, to reach an accord on this. So all in all, I think this is a positive development for the neighborhood and the city, so I would endorse it.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I, I agree with my colleagues, and so as to not protract further deliberations, I, I agree that the, it's, it's a reasonable request, and certainly I can support it as well. I'll also note that there appears, that the application does, it does appear to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance, and that OPD has let the applicant know that, that there's a Department of Public Services and Tree Commission recommendations and so that, uh, there's a Department of Public Services, uh, and Tree Commission recommendations, and so that is, um, there are no sidewalks and, uh, on either side of the street, and, uh, other than the three small flowering trees, uh, I think that, uh, we could just make that notation as part of any any approval or any motion, uh, so with that, do we have a motion to approve?
Since Mr. Moore, I'll make a a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for one sixty-three Crow Lane, uh, twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-sixth, with the condition that the Tree Commission chairs recommendations for tree plantings, and as mentioned, agreed upon in the presentation today, um, shall be coordinated with the Department of Public Services, um, with a timeline for completion documented in writing with the, uh, concurrence of the DPS prior to the grant of the building permit for the project, uh, and additionally, with an additional condition that the fencing, vegetation, um, and birch tree care, as, uh, as mentioned in presentation and agreed upon with, uh, a neighbor at one sixty-one, uh, shall also be executed, um, said completion will be verified prior to the grant of the occupancy permit for the new structure.
Very good, um, and do we have a second?
Greg Bennet, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Bennet, uh, calling the roll, um, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Chandler, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries, and the, uh, special permit for nonconformities application on one sixty-three Crow Lane is approved. Uh, good luck, and, uh, thank you very much for your, uh, patience and for your presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, have a good evening.
Have a good evening, Counselor, um, okay, moving to the next application, this is the application of Stephen and Jody Peculien. The application is ten Sylvester Street, this is a special permit for nonconformities, docket twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-nine, to raise an existing detached garage and construct, in addition, onto the existing home, including an attached garage, third-floor addition, and a farmer's porch. May we, uh, hear from the applicant?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, our members of the board, Attorney Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson, representing, uh, Stephen and Jody Peculien.
Very good, Counselor, uh, you, uh, you have the floor.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, um, with the with the Chair's leave, uh, my client, Mr. Peculien, would like to, um, make a brief statement to the board with respect to the proposal, and then I'll do my presentation, if that's acceptable.
Oh, however you wish to proceed, that's certainly fine, we just ask a full name and address for any presenter, um, even if it's the applicant, just so that we can identify them, and, uh, you, uh, you continue to have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Stephen, are you on?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Stephen Peculien, I live at ten Sylvester Street, Newburyport. Okay to proceed?
Yep.
Okay, uh, first, I want to thank the board members for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of mine and Jody's special permit application today, and to Caitlin for her patience with us and her assistance, uh, to get us to this point. I know there's a lot on the docket tonight, so I will, uh, be brief and respectful of your time. This house has been in my family for almost sixty years, and where four generations of my family have lived. It is the house where I grew up, and I am blessed to be raising my own children here. I will save Caitlin and and you guys, uh, the 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 time from having to listen about my personal connection to this house again this week, but suffice it to say, this property means a lot to me emotionally, and I take my stewardship of it very seriously. With regard to the neighborhood itself, although most of the faces have changed over year over the years, it is still a place where people are respectful, kind, social, and look out for one another. It is a great place to raise a family, and why I feel so privileged to live here. I am certainly eternally grateful to my neighbors who have supported me and my family during challenging times, and they know we are here for them when needed. When Jody and I started this project several years ago, we had really three goals in mind, we wanted to make this house function better for the multi-generational family we are, and to address the challenges faced by modern families. Uh, the house currently only has one full bathroom, which doesn't work too well with three adults, one teen and one soon-to-be teen. There was, we needed more closet and storage space, there's only one small coat closet on the first floor, and we wanted to make some other accommodations, like move the laundry from the basement to the second floor to reduce, uh, stair travel. Second, we wanted to use this renovation opportunity to update this infrastructure of this aging house to make it safer, more energy efficient, and viable for another ninety years. And lastly, we wanted a design that had architectural points of interest to enhance curb appeal, so the house played well, uh, within the neighborhood that we love so much. In the end, I think the plan Brian Libby came up with, and is presented before you achieve these goals and more. With regard to the front porch itself, it currently serves primarily as a weather barrier in the winter, and really, it's an oven in the summer, while you can sit out there with the windows open, uh, one person on either side of the door, it really isn't conducive to engage in conversations with neighbors or watching the world go by. The purpose of elongating it is to make it more open, and to provide us an opportunity to have those social interactions with our neighbors. As I stated last week before the historical commit, historical commission, while I could find another house in this town that checks all of these boxes for my family, my family's history with this house and in this neighborhood, and my love for both make that extremely difficult for me. I don't want to see this house torn down, which I feel would happen if I sold it. Many of the contractors I met with during this process have stated that it would be much cheaper to tear it down and start, uh, from scratch, which to me totally misses the point of what I'm trying to do. Again, my and Jody's hope is that you sign off on our permit today, so that we can update our home that so one day we can pass over stewardship to our children, while also enhancing the beauty of our neighborhood. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration, and we look forward to answering any questions you have for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, Mr. Chairman, I I'll move forward with the presentation then, uh, in the interest of time, uh, please go to the next slide. Uh, as was stated, the proposal is to raise the existing, uh, detached garage and remove the existing front entranceway, that front porch that Stephen spoke of, and construct an addition to the existing home. The addition will include an attached garage, a kitchen addition off the back, a third-floor addition over the existing structure, and the farmer's porch that was, um, referred to. The farmer's porch will result in an extension of the pre-existing nonconforming front yard setback. However, the proposed addition is designed in keeping with many of the surrounding homes, especially those recently redeveloped or improved upon, and the proposed addition will not have any substantial adverse impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, next slide, please. With respect to existing conditions, and and this has been a rarity for me in my relatively short, uh, time working here in Newburyport, uh, this lot is fully conforming as to size and frontage requirements. As you'll see shortly, it it could very well be the biggest lot in the neighborhood. Uh, the existing structure is nonconforming as to the front setback. That front porch, existing porch is only four point nine feet from the roadway, um, uh, or from the front lot line, I should say, uh, facing the roadway. Uh, the property has been and will continue to be used as a single-family residence, which is an allowed use within the R-two zoning district, next slide, please. The proposed addition will not create any new conformities, but would extend the pre-existing nonconforming front yard setback horizontally along the front lot line. However, what is proposed to happen here is they're going to remove that front porch, and I I'll show it to you in a picture in a moment. And that will put the front entrance of the home, the door, um, back to nine and a half feet from the front lot line, so it's pushing that front door back, almost doubling the distance. And what will be replaced there is an open farmer's porch that is proposed to go along the entirety of the existing structure, and it will extend to that existing four point nine foot setback, however, um, as I'll discuss in a moment, it's an open porch, so from a massing and scaling perspective, it is pushing sort of the front wall of the house, as you see from the from the road back. Uh, the proposed addition will raise the height of the structure from, uh, eighteen point three feet, uh, to twenty-nine feet. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just, uh, a a a, um, a picture of the, uh, dimensional controls, and as you can see, uh, we are conforming as to everything except for that front yard setback at four point nine feet. Next slide, please, uh, here's an overview of the neighborhood, and as I I said, uh, the, um, the ten Sylvester lot is probably the biggest lot in the neighborhood, um, it has an existing pool on one side, and you can see the, uh, existing garage setback on the other side, and there's a significant amount of of lawn area, uh, to the left side as well, so it's a it's a good-sized lot, certainly, uh, with respect to the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, next slide, please, uh, here's a picture of the front of the house, and this, you can see where the white, uh, storm door is, that's the proposed front entranceway that we're proposing to remove, uh, and push that door back, uh, to the to that to the wall, and then the front farmer's porch would be recreated along the front of the entirety of that uh, section of the home, uh, out to the, uh, existing, uh, uh, four point nine feet. Uh, the picture on the other, on the right side shows you the existing, uh, detached garage setting back on the left. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a view, the first picture here is a view sort of from the left, uh, right side of the house, looking across. Um, I took this picture so you could see the relevant, um, uh, distance between the existing home and our neighbor to the to the left, uh, you could see that home has been, either was built new or was a a reconstruction, because it's a fairly new, um, build and, uh, uh, significant in size. Uh, the other picture shows the house to the to the left, excuse me, to the right, uh, that it would be on the other side of the pool, so to speak. Um, and it is a, um, a fairly, uh, reasonably sized home, and I do have a close-up picture of that, uh, next picture. And this is the, uh, left side, excuse me, right side, uh, picture of the house from the pool and the back of the house. Excellent. Um, this shows the existing conditions plan, uh, thank you very much. Um, you can see, uh, the footprint of the existing home, the existing, uh, garage and the pool. Next slide, please. Thank you for zooming this one. Uh, so what we've done here is shown in red the proposed additions, and you can see off the back of the home is the proposed first store, or you know, first floor uh, addition, to the left is the proposed two-story, um, garage addition. Uh, there will be, as we said, a third-floor addition over the central part of the home, and then, if you look to the front, you can see where it's labeled proposed farmer's porch. You can see that we're proposing to build that open farmer's porch across the entirety of the front of the home out to the, uh, distance of the existing, uh, enclosed, uh, front entranceway. Um, we, I I'll just run through these quickly, uh, Mr. Libby, uh, our architect is here this evening and available to answer any of your questions, but we did want to present to you, uh, the elevations of the, uh, existing home here. And then on the next slide, uh, we begin with the, uh, oh, that's just a close-up of the existing uh, elevation, uh, home, so that we could show you the, um, existing height at eighteen feet, uh, plus or minus. Uh, the next plan is the first elevation of the proposed home. Uh, you can see the garage and and two-story addition to the left, and the front farmer's farmer's porch, uh, on the right, uh, and then the third-floor addition, um, left-side elevation, uh, next plan should be the right-side elevation. Thank you, is our right-side elevation, that would be the side facing the pool. And then, finally, the, uh, rear elevation of the home. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this is just a close-up of the elevations, uh, uh, of of, uh, showing you the heights to to verify that our heights have all been accurately, uh, presented. Uh, next slide, I think I'm getting to the end, um, this is, uh, again, gentlemen, just a, um, presentation of your proposed, or or, excuse me, of your zoning ordinances and the intent of the bylaws, and the standard, uh, requiring that we not be substantially more detrimental, and now I'd like to just apply those ordinances to our proposal, for you. Next slide, please. Okay, so the existing, uh, and proposed uses are allowed within your, uh, the existing R-two zoning district. The, excuse me, the lot, uh, is fully conforming as to area and frontage, uh, and is certainly one of the largest, if not the largest lot in the neighborhood. Uh, there will be no new conformities created by the proposed construction. The newly, uh, renovated home will meet your height, lot coverage, open space regulations, as well as side, both side and rear setback requirements. Um, while we are increasing the home of the size of the home, it will not be imposing on the surrounding homes due to the fact that we're set back um, so far from all of these surrounding homes, and although we're close to the front lot line, I will remind you that the nearest home is is across the street, so there is a significant amount of distance, uh, between the front of our home and the front of the neighbor on the other side. Um, the increase and extension of the pre-existing nonconforming front setback will not be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. As I said, the actual front wall of the home and door will be pushed back to nine point five feet, nearly double the, uh, its existing location. The proposed farmer's porch, although extending along that pre-existing front setback, is open. An open-air porch, as Mr. Coolen said, um, you know, they're they're looking for a place where they can hang out and and interact with their neighbors and, uh, enjoy the neighborhood, um, and given that it's open, I think it really does help to reduce the massing and scaling from the street, because when you your eyes, when you look, you really see the front wall of the house, not necessarily the front of the porch. Um, that will help to decrease the massing and scaling to the street. Um, the neighbors most affected are those across, directly across the street, uh, and, um, as I said, they are sufficiently set back on their lot, and we do have the street between us, so, uh, our porch will not be imposing on them. The existing structure, as was stated earlier, um, is in need of some update and modernization for the owner's multiple multi-generational use, um, um, uh, Jody's parent mom is going to, is is living with them, so they will have a multi-generational use. The proposed design is in keeping with the architecture of the existing home, although we believe it is certainly an improvement on that, and as, uh, Stephen mentioned, they wanted to provide some architectural, um, uh, significant architectural improvements. Um, the proposed, uh, reconstruction certainly is an aesthetic improvement to the structure, and will add value not only to this home, but to the neighborhood in general. Uh, it will help to bring up values of of surrounding homes, without question. Um, we will have actually little or no impact to the neighborhood, uh, other than in making this house a a a very attractive and and beautiful addition to the neighborhood. Uh, certainly not creating any substantial, uh, detriments to to our neighbors or to the neighborhood in general. Um, with respect to neighbor support, um, Peculien's have 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 gone above and beyond, uh, they have literally met with all of their surrounding neighbors, um, and discussed the 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 proposal with them, I I think they've been discussing this proposal with them for a number of years, uh, but have finally met with them with the exact design, and we have provided to you a petition signed by twenty-three um, neighbors, all supporting, uh, the petition, um, they have all been found to be very welcoming of the improvement, and and certainly in light of the fact that, uh, this is going to allow Stephen and Jody to stay here and I and continue to, uh, raise their family here, um, i- this is a great neighborhood, and and we have a lot of neighbor support. Um, I would, last slide, please. Thank you. Um, there was a recommendation, um, from the Tree Commission, there are no sidewalks on either side of the street, so there was no recommendation with respect to sidewalk improvements, however, um, there was mentioned, uh, by the Tree Commission and through the Planning Department that, um, the existing juniper trees, uh, that are are in front of the house, uh, should be replaced with a species that fits the neighborhood. uh, should be replaced with a species that fits the neighborhood. Um, my clients are, uh, certainly agreeable to working with the city in considering those recommendations to replace those juniper trees with a species that not only fits the neighborhood, uh, but is acceptable to both the commission, the tree commission and, uh, and Jody and Stephen as well. I mean, they, they look forward to working with the city to, to improve the, the aesthetics of the front of the house, uh, through some tree improvements. So, uh, they want to make this a great place and, uh, you know, are certainly willing to work with the city and, and helping enhance the, uh, front landscape. With that, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate your time, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that you might have. As I said, uh, Mr. Libby, our architect, Mr. Dixon, the, um, surveyor, uh, as well as my clients are here to answer any questions you might have with respect to the proposal.
All right. Thank you, Attorney DeShane. So we will, uh, surely circle back with, uh, perhaps some questions. Um, closing that portion of the public hearing, the presentation portion, uh, we'll now move into, uh, public comment. And again, just ask, uh, those who wish to speak to take note of the slide that Mr. Portz put up on the rules of the road for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak in connection with this application, just click the raise hand button, please, and I'll recognize you and we'll ask you to unmute your mic. Seeing no, uh, no hands at the moment, we will, uh, go once, go twice. Still seeing no hands, I will close that portion of the public hearing and we will go into questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. DeShane, well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Peculian for that, uh, that opening and description of the family and family history of the neighborhood. That was really, uh, helpful. Um, second, Mr. DeShane, could, I just want to confirm, and I think it's, it's in, we have it with the close up heights. I just had to kind of zoom in to see this, but, um, am I correct? And this could be a question for Mr. Libby. I don't know. Am I correct in seeing that the, the peak of the house, and I know peak isn't what we use in measuring. I'm just curious as to the peak, um, as far as size and massing goes here. The peak of the house now is twenty-six feet and it's going to be thirty-four six as presented?
Um, yes, Mr. Chan, um, let's see, I'm looking the height to the peak on this drawing. And I believe I'm reading, um, now that, that, that would show the median.
Height to peak on the far right, I believe since thirty-four six.
Yeah, on the far right, and I was just about to read it to you. Um, but I, I, I do have a plan here as well.
Okay.
Um, the height to the peak is, is thirty-four feet. Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
Um, and in fact, we, that's why I provided that proposed building height sketch with those numbers, um, so that we could read them. There we go. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Moore.
Excellent. Um, and the third floor, um, as far as the layout, is that? Is that going to be used for bedroom? Is that a? A space to be determined later? Curious.
Mr. Libby or, or Stephen, would you?
Yeah. Yeah. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, currently, um, it's, it's, the plan is to serve as an office space. Um, a- as we know with COVID, we, we found that we needed other spaces when, in the house for people to meet. So, uh, this will become kind of a dedicated office on the right. And on the left, it's going to be kind of a craft room. Um, the office space will probably serve as, um, a, a guest bedroom too.
Understood. All right. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Delisle.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I was wondering if we could, uh, sort of repeat the exercise, uh, from earlier and just go over sort of the square footage, um, of the existing and the proposed structures?
Okay. Um.
Would you mind doing that, uh, for, um, for Mr. Delisle, Attorney DeShane?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to, it's, um, let me just, um, grab my notes here. Um, I did, I did, um, receive from my client, here we go. Alrighty. Um, so with respect to the existing, uh, structure, um, when we count the, uh, porch entryway, the main house and the rear entryway, um, the main floor of the house, and, uh, uh, we have a total of eighteen hundred and twenty-three square feet of, of, of space. Um, I will say that does include the e- entryways, um, as, as living space, so eighteen twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, with the, um, with the new home, um, we have counted a hundred and eighty-six square feet in the basement because that's going to be finished. Uh, on the first floor, we've included, um, all space on that first floor, including, uh, you know, hallways and, and entryways. Uh, and, and then on the second floor, again, the entire space, including the over the garage master, uh, bedroom and, and connector hallways. And then on the third floor, um, we've counted that floor as finished space for a total of thirty-seven eighty-one square feet. We are, uh, technically, uh, doubling the, uh, square footage of the home.
Right, oh, okay.
But, but as mentioned, we, we're, we're looking at a, a, a home that has one bathroom.
Yeah, no, no, understood. The, the, um, the remarks by the homeowner in the beginning of the presentation were very compelling. Uh, I just wanted to get more of a, you know, a, uh, some numbers as to the, uh, the square footage, both existing and proposed. Um, uh, final question from me is the, the drawing by Mr. Libby. Uh, I'm having a difficult time sort of understanding the material of the chimney on the left-hand side of the, of the structure. Um, could you explain that to me or could Mr. Libby explain that?
I, I, I'd be happy to do that, sir. And, and I do apologize, I didn't mention to the board previously, um, that we have been before, uh, the historic commission. And the historic commission did, uh, determine that the, uh, prior use and the structure itself was, uh, did not have historical significance. Um, and, and interestingly, they, they asked the same question, Mr. Moore. So that's why I have the answer. Um, uh, my clients are proposing that it will be brick or stone. It will not be just a, you know, flat painted, uh, a wood trimmed. Um, they want to have some kind of, um, stone or brick feature. So the, 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 that chimney way will be, uh, stone or brick.
Oh, okay. That, that'll be striking. Um, okay, the, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Um, Mr. Chairman.
A couple of questions, um, I, I guess in keeping with some of the discussion on what's, what's included in the new homes. So it sounds like we have an existing, uh, single bath. How many bathrooms will be in the new? The new home?
Um, I can count those. One, two. Um, Stephen, am I correct that there will be, um?
Hey, you.
Excuse me? There'd be a half bath on the first floor, uh, a full bath on the second floor and a?
No, there'll, there'll be, so there'll be, uh, three bathrooms on the second floor, one bathroom on the third floor, a half bathroom on the first floor and a full, full bathroom in the basement. And part of that is to meet the multi-generalization, multi-generalite generational aspects of this. Uh, because my mother-in-law lives with us, we wanted to give her, her own, uh, bathroom. Uh, so it will be an en suite with no, uh, direct access from the hallway. So it'll be attached to her bedroom.
Great, understood. Thank you. And, and, uh, I've got, I actually got a question, um, chair for Andy. Only because this came up with, uh, another application that came in front of us.
Yes.
If, if a porch is not walled in, so it's open, does it count in the setback calculation? We had this with a home up on, uh, Merrimack Street or apartment complexes where they, oh, they put an enclosed, uh, entryway in and that counted. But had they not enclosed it, I thought the discussion was, it wouldn't have counted. And, and I know it's semantics, but it just makes the setback better if the porch doesn't count. That's the reason I'm asking.
Yeah, no, we would not count that portion there, um, for this.
So, so the, um, the fact that they're taking off the, the, the enclosed porch, which is four point nine feet, front yard setback and going back to the main house, which I think was over nine feet, is the true setback of this proposed application nine feet? From the front yard?
Yes.
Yes, so, so they're improving it. Okay, no, no other questions, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chen and Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions. This is an ambitious and an admirable project. And I applaud, uh, the Peculian family for their commitment to their home state.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I, uh, I share the sentiment of the board and I, I find that, uh, it's always laudable when, uh, when there's an application that seeks to create a multi-generational, uh, kind of longevity to, uh, you know, kind of adapting what is there so that it can continue to survive into, uh, you know, into future generations. I think that's, that's the best version of adaptive reuse when it comes to, you know, family relations. Um, so, uh, I can certainly support it as well, uh, for all the reasons, uh, that we've, uh, we've shared, but, but I think we are still in, uh, questions, so I don't have any other questions. Um, we can, at this point, um, move to, did we, did we move into deliberations already? Members of the CBA. So I think we slipped into some deliberating, uh, but let's close this portion of the public hearing. Let's just formally jump into deliberations. We'll run through the role once more. Uh, though I suspect, uh, we're going to hear much, uh, of what we've already heard. So let's, let's kick things off with Mr. Moore. And again, we're deliberating, uh, the application, which is the criteria for special permit for non-conformities. Uh, and, uh, again, Mr. Moore, why don't you lead us off?
I think I want to go back to questions. No, I am kidding. Um, I, I just think that, um, I mean, uh, for all the, people have said it better than I will say it right now, as I stumbled through this, uh, many admirable features of, to this project, um, they've been, they've been mentioned by my colleagues, I'll leave it there. But there's no new non-conformity and in, in fact, it's improving one as, as, uh, Mr. Chang and explored and found out, we're improving, uh, the only one that was, uh, that was an issue. So, um, with no new non-conformity there and, uh, the only question we had, and it's an ambitious project, so it's a big change from what's there. Is it more, um, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there now? And, uh, with the updates, um, and the improved front yard setback, um, and, uh, you know, updating the entire property by, by changing this, um, structure as it is. Um, and then when you pack on top, which is something that we don't decide issues on, but that, uh, certainly, I don't think in my, my brief tenure here, I've seen more letters of support from neighbors in a, in a dense, um, neighborhood. Um, clearly, I don't see how you could say it's, it could be more detrimental to any neighborhood with that level of support. So that said, I'll, I'll cut myself off and say I can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Um, I'm going to agree entirely with Mr. Moore. Uh, I think, um, that it, there's clearly no, uh, addition of a new non-conformity. And I don't think this is going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It seems like an excellent project, um, and, uh, the familial aspect of this is, is compelling, as I mentioned before. Um, so I can support this project.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Chen.
And I have to ditto, uh, all the previous comments and, and, uh, again, applaud, uh, the homeowner and the presenters. Great presentation, great design for a new home and, uh, wish them the best of luck. Uh, I can certainly support the application.
Kudos. Thank you, Mr. Chen and, uh, Mr. Bennet.
I'll echo those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I, uh, I too, uh, this is Rob Champetti, I too, uh, share that sentiment. And again, um, it's a, a wonderful presentation, very thoroughly presented. Uh, so thank you, Attorney DeShane and, uh, your client as well for that, uh, that, uh, granular background. It helps us understand the project and I too can support it. So, so with no further deliberations, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. And I will invite a motion to approve from, um, a member of the CBA. Do we have a motion?
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll make, uh, the motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for Ten Sylvester Street, file number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine, with the condition that the tree commission chair's recommendation for tree plantings, uh, shall be coordinated with the Department of Public Services with a plan and timeline for completion documented in writing with concurrence of the Department of Public Services prior to the grant of the building permit for the project. Uh, and I think in particular, there was discussion with respect to the replacement of the, uh, were they junipers in the front?
I believe, yeah, there were, they, the tree commission referenced, um, uh, unkempt junipers to the right of the house as well as, uh, well-maintained boxwoods to the left of the driveway.
Um, and said completion shall be verified prior to the grant of the occupancy permit for the new structure.
Very good. Thank you, uh, for crafting that motion, Mr. Delisle. Do we have a second?
Okay, and I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Genon, calling the role on the motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries. And the special permit for non-conformities with that special condition regarding trees, uh, and, uh, tree, uh, tree commission is approved. Uh, thank you very much and congratulations. Good luck to, uh, Attorney DeShane and dear client.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much. And if I could, I'd like to thank Caitlin for all of her assistance she provided to me and, and helping me to get, uh, this material uploaded correctly. I, 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 I do appreciate her help. Thank you very much.
Very good. Um, thank you. Okay, so moving on to our, uh, next application. This is an application, uh, for a special permit for non-conformities, docket twenty twenty-one dash forty. The applicant, Winward Shaw LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta LLC, for the property located at three fifty-seventh street. The applicant seeks all necessary permits to remove a pre-existing non-conforming home and replace it with a new conforming home in excess of the floor area ratio. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Acosta, thirty Green Street. Uh, and with me this evening is George Hazelton of Winward Shaw, who is the contractor for the project, and John and Haley Saminsky, who are the owners of this home and have been for nine years, um, as well as Brian Libby, who is the architect on the project. Um, and if I could pick up on the color of, uh, Attorney DeShane's from earlier, I suggest you all pull out your sand wedges, both for distance and conditions. Cause we are going to Plum Island at three fifty-seventh street. Um, so this project is a, uh, request to remove a current pre-existing non-conforming structure and replace it with a structure that is, uh, fully conforming but for, um, the F A R. And so currently, um, the, uh, project, uh, is in front of the conservation commission, just for the board's information. Uh, we didn't close the hearing last time because the, uh, D E P number hadn't issued. Uh, and the, uh, there needed to be some coordination on the plans and a couple of comments reflected on the plans from the commission. Uh, John and Haley, as I said, want to remove and reconstruct their home in a smaller footprint in compliance with the FEMA standards on the property. Uh, the property is in the R three zoning district and the Piad overlay district. Um, the property includes forty-nine hundred square feet is a very typical Plum Island lot where twelve thousand square feet are required, seventy feet of frontage where a hundred and twenty feet are required. The left side setback is ten point six where twenty feet are required. The rear setback is fifteen point one where twenty feet are required. The lot coverage is at twenty-one point three where twenty-one, twenty percent is required. And a portion of the existing structure is also located in the A O flood zone. There are currently ten, uh, two bedrooms in this single-story structure. And the structure has eight hundred and fourteen square feet of living area. If you go to the next slide, please. So here are the, um, architectural drawings of the existing structure. As you can see, it's a standard, uh, older Plum Island, uh, bungalow. And next slide, please. And here are the rear and left side elevations. And just to give some color to that, we've got some photographs of the existing conditions. So here you can see it's a standard Former Cottage on Plum Island. Next slide, please. And here's the backyard. You can see, I'll point out in this photograph, a newer house built to the right or to the, this is actually to the West of this, close to North End Boulevard, Northern Boulevard. Next slide, please. And here's the front of the house. Next slide, please. And here is another photo of the front of the house. So the next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, the proposal is to remove the existing structure, which does not meet any of the performance standards Or the regulatory strictures of the Wetlands Protection Ordinance and Regulations for Plum Island, Nor does it meet the purpose of the Piad, quite frankly. Further, the existing structure imposes on the setback requirements. And it's not FEMA compliant. Importantly, the actual lot coverage with our new proposal Will improve by five percent as the size of the footprint of the home is reduced. The entire structure will now meet the local wetlands requirements As well as the FEMA construction requirements and will continue to only be two bedrooms. However, the proposed FAR will be at twenty-eight point nine percent. And you can go to the next slide, please. So here is the site plan, so you can see the existing and proposed conditions. On the left, you can see the proposed, the existing structure with the driveway And the shed, the deck in the front. And you can kind of see the, well, you can't, you can exactly see the flood line in the back where the house goes through a corner of the The AO AE zone goes through the back corner of the house. On the right-hand side, you can see the proposed new structure Which fully meets all of the setback requirements, reduces the footprint And is pulled out of the AO zone and is in the AE nine zone, which will be compliant with the construction. So you can see that on the right-hand side. So The, as I said, the structure will meet all the setback requirements of the Piad, thereby eliminating the non-conforming rear and side setbacks. It will reduce lot coverage over the existing conditions to sixteen point three percent By eliminating those nonconformities And will increase the open space on the property to forty-eight point six percent over the current condition of thirty-five percent. As noted, the reduction lot coverage of the proposed is because the proposed structure is smaller in footprint As well as the removal of the shed In the back. However, the proposed structure, as I noted, will increase the FAR to twenty-eight point nine percent. I think it's important to note, as I said earlier, the existing structure is eight hundred and fourteen, excuse me, eight hundred and fourteen square feet. The proposed structure is to be at fourteen hundred and sixteen square feet. So still quite small for a house of this size, that additional one hundred and ninety-one Square feet is very important and has a large impact on the livability of the home. Next slide, please. So here are Brian's drawings. You can see the front elevation on the left And the right side elevation on the right. Next slide, please. Again, you can see the left side elevation. You can see the the lift in the back where the propane tank will go above grade. And then you can see the rear elevation of the house as well. What you see, the gap in the in the bottom is the required Two and a half feet of just about two and a half, maybe it says three feet, lift above the sand to allow the movement of sand and floodwaters on the On the, on the ground. Next slide, please. And here is a section in the house, so you can see where the the living space, you have the garage. Then you have the two floors of living space. And then, of course, the attic, which is full of utilities. And the next slide, please. And then we just have the the various floor plans, so this is the The first floor. And then the next slide, please. And then we have the the actual living space, first floor, the first one was, sorry, the piling plan, but this, this is the living space First floor. And you'll see the bedrooms on the the second floor, you have two bedrooms. Next slide, please. So the question is whether or not the extension of the FAR is substantially more detrimental To the neighborhood or to the Piad than the existing structure. And when the board determines whether the change is substantially more detrimental, The board considers the conditions of the neighborhood generally as compared to The subject lot and the existing conditions. Here, the applicant is making improvements to the structure all around and under the Piad. But for the FAR with the additional hundred and ninety-one square feet. It's reducing damage to the public and private property by, by, it's Proposing to reduce damage to public and private property resulting from floodwaters By lifting it up, it will ensure public safety by reducing the threats of life and personal injury Eliminating costs associated with responsive cleanup of flooding. All of this is in the purpose section of the Piad. And by constructing the structure in a manner which meets the FEMA guidelines and the conservation of wetlands as well as the zoning, We address all of those issues as laid out in the purpose of the Piad. Again, I would say to the board that the board's obligation is to decide the conditions Of that exist on this applica, on this application and not something That are unknown future circumstances. I won't go into that. Again, we heard that earlier today. But here, the alteration and reconstruction is permitted in this instance In an increase in FAR by a finding of whether or not The change or the excess is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions. Here, the applicant is lifting the structure, making it compliant with the purposes of the ordinance. The infrastructure will meet all of the dimensional requirements of the ordinance but for the FAR. And as I showed you on the attached photographs, currently, the eight hundred and fourteen square feet of living space is quite small. And it goes without saying that the structure is in existing conditions, does not meet current or wetlands FEMA requirements. And quite frankly, therefore, the proposed structure cannot be substantially more detrimental than existing conditions. Also, several homes in the area have started to be, to convert, to become more compliant and flood resilient, as you know, that will happen Over time. And finally, Haley and John have spoken with all of their neighbors and then some, and they have all provided letters of support Including fourteen different letters of support. If you could go down to the last slide, Andy. So Haley and John have received fourteen letters of support importantly from every single one of their most adjacent neighbors. We believe then, based upon the improvements to the nonconformities, The slight increase over the twenty-five percent of the FAR, The improvement Of the impacts on the Piad, The remaining house being two bedrooms That the board can find that the request to exceed the twenty-five percent is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure Or within the Piad itself, and we'd request your consideration. I might add one other thing That I know there's always a question about materials, so I thought I would add that here As well. If you want to go back up to one of the elevations, Andy. Just to show, so the materials are going to be, the siding is going to be a straight edge, five-inch straight edge shingle Fiber cement material. There will probably composite trim like a Borrell, for example. The railings and balustrades will be composite on the decks. There'll be an asphalt shingle roof with metal accents in various locations around the structure. So with that, we'd request the board's consideration of our special permit request.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. Moving, I will close that portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. Anyone Wish to make comment, either support and opposition or just simply a comment, feel free to raise your hand. Seeing no hands yet, going once, going twice. I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and we will move to questions from the board. We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Give us the chairman. Attorney Mead, could you, is there any way to generalize The the hundred and ninety-one square feet that's being added to this, where where the the space is, it's just Is all coming or going into one specific area or room? Is it just in in general? The layout is going to make that happen?
Right, so it's not, it's not a one hundred and ninety-one Square feet addition over the existing, right? It's one hundred and ninety-one more than the twenty-five percent. I just wanted to.
Okay, okay.
Um, so it's just adds a little bit more space in the kitchen and the bedrooms, like, you know, several, like Two feet wider in those areas. It doesn't add Overall living space, I guess I would say to you, like, there's not an additional room added because of the one hundred and ninety-one. It just makes The rooms have a little more breathing space.
Fair enough. I don't have any other questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so I guess we're in the conundrum of a small lot with a small house Moving to Proposed modest house. So I guess just for clarification, Andy, on slide fifteen, if you could pull that up. Attorney Mead, we are looking at two bathrooms on the second floor, full bathrooms, and then a half bath on the first floor. Is that, is that accurate?
Um, I am looking at that. That is correct. Two full baths on the second floor and a half bath on the first floor. That is correct.
And does the existing Structure have just, just a single bathroom?
Hang on one second, I'll let you know. My guess is that the answer is yes, given the eight hundred and fourteen square feet and it being two bedrooms.
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay. Could, could you just Sort of rough, rough numbers? What are the the dimensions of the the bedrooms in the proposed structure?
So.
I don't know if you need to go into the dimensions, that's probably a little bit too Too much of a request, just sort of rough numbers on the square.
Sure, I'm going to see if Brian can Give us the the square footage of the bedrooms. I I would, while he's hopping on here. The proposed structure is still only fourteen hundred and sixteen square feet, so I I still think it's fairly small. But in any event, Mr. Libby, can you answer the size of the master and the second bedroom?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I've got a terrible internet connection, so if you can't make out what I say, please tell me and I'll repeat it. I guess for the record, Brian Libby, architect, twelve fifty-one West Linda Vista Boulevard, Oral Valley, Arizona. The answer to your question, I just some quick scratching, but the master bedroom, which is on the top of the drawing there, is approximately sixteen by fifteen. The lower bedroom, the second bedroom, is about eleven by twelve. And just to add another comment, the real difference in adding the square footage that we're talking about Mostly has to do with the second bedroom, which he wants to use as an office and a spare bedroom. That was so small that you couldn't fit a queen bed in there and get the chair for a desk and so forth. So much of that Space that you're you're asking about just makes those two rooms much more usable. It also Same downstairs on the first floor Is about a foot and a half difference from my first go-around and so forth. It just, there's no, there's no additional room added. It's just making it a much more livable for them.
If I could pick up on one thing, just to be clear, because just so the board is Sees this on the plans. So on the second floor, the second floor is only six hundred and sixty-two square feet in total. And that area at the top right, that's an outdoor deck. That's not living space. That's an outdoor deck, so the living space is, in fact, those two bedrooms and bathrooms and closet.
I think the same is true on the, on the bottom of the structure too.
That is.
On the bottom as well.
Yeah, thank you. That is correct.
I have no further questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Chen.
Yes, thank you, Chair. A great proposal, by the way, Attorney Mead. I like the fact that You've, if you will, dimensionally Trunk everything to fit into the Into the footprint of this small lot. But the problem, once again, becomes the far. And I guess just, just to, you know, help clarify, one hundred and ninety-one square feet you're mentioning would be Reduction in size of this Dwelling, get it back down to a point two five five. And if, if I, if I look at the math, the existing house is eight fourteen. Be proposing to go to fourteen sixteen, which gives us the larger far. If we were to go back down to twenty-five Two five, be a twelve hundred square foot house, which is Extremely small, and I, I only say that just to Just to kind of try to put it in perspective that You know, this is, this is quite a modest Addition, if you will, expansion to the size of this Building. And a, and a fairly modest request to go from the point two five five to Two eight nine. That, that's all. I guess I don't have a question. It was just to, just to clarify the calculations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. And Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennet. I I also have no questions that haven't already been asked by my colleagues, so I will close that portion of the public hearing. And we will go into deliberations. And again, in deliberations, this is a special permit for nonconformity, so I ask the board to Kindly tailor your deliberations around the the two principal Tenants of of the special permit criteria. And with that, we'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought the presentation was very thorough. I was impressed by the fact that we are relatively long-term owners here. The fact that the the structure will be built to comply with local wetland requirements as as well as FEMA construction, I mean, it seems to be, it'll be a lot safer being up Off of the dunes versus where it is now. Which I would see as Improving Any threat to the Piad and and surrounding neighbors in the event of some, you know, catastrophic event down the future that we're trying to predict, so. I don't, you know, the structure doesn't come within ten feet of side lot lines. The only issue is the wonderful FAR. But in this case, I think the positives of lessening the flood damage Making it compliant with new FEMA regulations, lessening flood damage potential. And keeping it a modest proposal as far as a fourteen hundred square foot home is, is Certainly not a McMansion. And with support, full support of of surrounding neighbors, again, I don't see how we could see this as much more detrimental to the neighborhood. Being out of the flood zones, not more detrimental to the Piad. Long way of saying I can support it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Mr. Moore. I mean, I think that the the driver here for the offending FAR calculation Is the fact that the lot is just a small lot. You know, if this were a proposal to be building a twenty-eight hundred square foot Structure, I think it would be a little bit different, but here, you know, this is As we've said A couple times, it's, this is a modest proposal. It's a nice-looking proposal, and I think, you know, just to echo Mr. Moore's Sentiment towards the end of his remarks, that it it does Bring the the structure in line with, you know, modern requirements. And, you know, for that reason, I I also can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Mr. Chen.
I have to agree with my colleagues, and again, the presentation, great design. As stated, the The gains, the improvements far outweigh the Small encroachment on the FAR, so I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. And Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I can agree for the comments made by my colleagues. The FAR is somewhat of a Somewhat of a red herring here, given the lot size and certainly the The design benefits as it relates to the Piad and other environmental Considerations, in my view, outweigh The strict uh the strict uh far uh regulation that we're faced with. So that being said, I certainly can support this. It's it's an improvement, uh, and I think a substantial improvement uh to the island and and under the piad.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Uh, I too, uh, I share the sentiments with my colleagues, notwithstanding the FAR calculation of it is a uh it's it's a credible and I think a modest under the circumstances improvement uh upon what's there and and bringing it into compliance with uh with FEMA uh performance standards is is also a uh a a fundamental central purpose of uh of the piad as well as other things. So I think it's a responsible application. I too support it. I also want to note uh for the record that while the application does appear to trigger the street and sidewalk ordinance under our zoning ordinance, um, as is usual uh on applications in Plum Island, we uh uh there is no uh there is no recommendation for street trees and or sidewalks, so we just simply note that for the record. Um, without any further deliberations, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and invite a motion to approve from the ZBA. Do we have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for three fifty-seventh Street, uh file number twenty twenty-one dash forty. It's just Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
It's Greg Bennet. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Bennet on the motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities, three fifty-seventh Street. Um, calling the roll, uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delilah.
Yes.
Mr. Chan.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries. And the special permit for nonconformities on three fifty-seventh Street is approved. Uh, thank you, Attorney Mead and uh Mr. Libby, and uh congratulations and good luck to you and your and your clients.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so moving to the uh final application in our public hearings, uh, this is the application of Ezekiel Wheeler. Uh, the property is six Perkins Way. It is a special permit docket twenty twenty-one dash four one to allow storage warehouse use number five, I'm sorry, use number six thirteen. Uh, may we hear from the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening, uh, members of the board. Um, Attorney Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson, representing Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Attorney DeShane, and uh please feel free to proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would like to inform the board that Mr. Wheeler is also on the meeting with us this evening. Uh, Mr. Wheeler is currently under contract to purchase a four thousand square foot unit uh within the newly constructed uh industrial building at six Perkins Way. Um, if I could, uh, go to the next slide, please. Uh, the applicant is seeking a special permit pursuant to the uh new report table of use regulations, use number six one three uh storage warehousing. Uh, this use regulation has recently been amended to allow for storage and warehousing. Uh, I will point out, however, it does not allow for retail or public storage, so this wouldn't be uh a like a used store it type of building uh wouldn't be allowed here. Um, my, uh, as I said, my uh client is purchasing a square thou- four thousand square foot unit within the building. Uh, Mr. Wheeler's company, Intelligent Labor and Moving, Inc., uh, would like to use the facility for the temporary storage of items being moved by his company uh for his clients. Uh, he has an existing uh location, I believe in Andover, uh, and he is looking to um move his uh to expand his company uh into Newbury Port. Uh, the proposed use is for the storage of household goods and furniture and and very seldom uh some office furniture that is being temporarily stored while it's being moved from one location to another. Um, there is a significant demand for moving services into and out of Newbury Port, as we know. And there's certainly a a very strong need for moving services that can provide this type of temporary storage. So what what would happen is that Mr. Wheeler's company would have a contract to move uh materials from one home to another. But because the new home isn't going to be ready or they haven't closed or whatever, um, Mr. Wheeler's company will temporarily store those materials that they're moving uh in within this uh proposed structure um uh until the destination facility is available. Uh, if we could move to the next slide, please. Um, the the property is located within the I one B district. The requested use is proposed um in a recently approved and constructed building. This building is new. Um, Mr. Wheeler will be one of the first tenants. Um, the utility services are new and were designed to support industrial uses, so we have no concerns about the ability of the facility to provide utilities. Uh, the proposed use, which is storage warehousing, is in direct harmony with the purpose of the applicable ordinance, which again was recently amended by the city council to allow the specific use of proposed uh by Mr. Wheeler. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the proposed use, I believe, could be considered a very light industrial use and will require very little in terms of water, sewer, electric, or other utilities. Uh, there will be no permanent employees located at the facility. Uh, rather, it will be accessed accessed by employees on a job-by-job basis. So if there is a big job moving materials in or out of the facility, uh, there could be one or two administrative personnel who would come to oversee that. And then, of course, you could have between two and eight movers temporarily accessing the site on any particular job to either bring materials in or move them out. Uh, I will say that what happens here is that the materials are generally um placed into large wooden crates. And then the wooden crates are what are actually, you know, moved uh in and out of the facility. There may be a requirement to park one to two trucks on the site overnight. Uh, and and it will just be a temporary situation in support of a moving job, so that if they're going to be moving materials out of the facility, they may move the trucks there the day before. However, the unit has more than uh adequate exclusive parking associated with the unit to support any of the parking needs we would have. Uh, again, it might be one or two cars parked there for a particular job, uh, but no um lo- long-term or um consistent parking uh will be used. Uh, the clients of Mr. Wheeler will not be allowed to access the facility, so this isn't uh available to the public. Um, once the the materials are are in the um facility, um, the clients are not allowed to act uh access it uh except on very rare uh pre-approved emergency cases. I I can't think of what that might be, but if somebody accidentally packed something that they needed, uh, and and it was an emergency, I think they can make arrangements to get there. But for the most part, there will be no public access to the facility. Uh, the p- the proposed use will generate much less traffic and little or no pedestrian traffic than a you know, typical use in the industrial zone. This is a very quiet, low-key uh use. Uh, Mr. Wheeler expects that he would have between zero and possibly eighteen vehicle trips, you know, representing a trip in and a trip out um between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. But on most days, there will be little or no traffic. So, uh, again, on its busiest day, we might see nine uh trips in and out. Um, there will be no hazardous materials allowed to be stored in the facility, nor will any be used in the operation of the use. Uh, the use does not generate or admit any dangerous forms of environmental pollution, and the use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or the adjourning districts, nor be detrimental to health or welfare. Uh, again, um, i- i- is my position that this is a very uh low, light uh industrial use and uh and will have very little impact on the on the s- structure or the um neighborhood in general. Um, this is just a quick picture showing um the construction of the facility. Um, and the next picture is the uh site plan that was approved by the planning board for the development of the site. Uh, then I think there's one or two additional pictures as the site was being developed, just so you can see. And here are the bays, if you will, or the the units, um, you know. And again, one last picture. So, uh, in conclusion, uh, gentlemen, the proposed use is in conformance and harmony with the recently amended uh use number six one three, allowing for this very use. Um, there is a significant demand for this type of moving with temporary storage services uh in our area. This use will not create undue traffic congestion or impaired pedestrian safety. It won't overload public utilities or services, as it will, you know, use very little of that. The impaired uh integrity or charact- it will not impair the integrity or character of the district or any adjourning districts, nor be detrimental to health and welfare. It will not uh create an excess of this proposed use. I would suggest that this is probably the first such uh proposal, given that the uh the uh the ink is still dry on the amended bylaw, so or excuse me, ordinance. So, um, we're certainly not going to create an excess of this use in the neighborhood. And uh the use uh will not be conducted in a manner so as to admit any noxious or dangerous forms of environmental pollution. Quite frankly, as I said, a very quiet um low-impact use uh which the city has recently um supported. So with that, gentlemen, I um and would be happy to answer any questions you might have. And again, uh, Mr. Wheeler is here with me if you have any specific questions about his uh his business.
Thank you, Attorney DeShanes, and um we will uh go ahead and close that portion of the presentation portion of the uh the hearing and go to questions. Any public comment questions, uh, seeing as that there are no members of the public left other than Attorney DeShanes and his client, Mr. Wheeler? Um, anyone wish to speak, going once, going twice? Seeing no hands, I will close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. Mr. Moore, we'll begin with you.
I thought that was a very thorough presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, by the way. I thought that was a very thorough presentation. I have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Delilah.
Uh, just one question. What was the basis for the estimation of the number of trips to the uh facility per day at zero to eighteen? Could could you just uh expand on that a little bit?
Sure, I I did receive that from Mr. Wheeler. And again, I know it and I allow him to answer it, but I know it's allowed. I mean, it was uh provided based on uh his existing uh facility and what he's seeing there. So, um, Ezekiel, do you, is there any more uh background to that estimate?
Yes, sir. Um, it's based on the idea that that, you know, currently, according to plan, at most, we'd have uh one or two trucks there. So there'd be a truck leaving and departing, and then a number of employees to staff those trucks, leaving and departing. Um, and essentially no other staff besides those. So each truck carries, you know, uh, two or three folks per per vehicle. Um, so it's it's based on that, you know, with a a little bit of variation. We're also a seasonal business, so in the winter, there's quite often going to be zero. Um, it'll be a little bit busier in the summer. Um, you know, in the middle or more towards the eighteen.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And that that was my only.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delilah. Uh, Mr. Chan.
No questions, Chair. Uh, very, very thorough presentation. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Bennet.
No questions here.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And I do have no further questions, uh, so we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations. And in deliberating, uh, members of the ZBA, this is a special permit, so I ask you to tailor your deliberations around the special permit criteria. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
All right, now when you did, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, with respect to the special permit for uh to allow for the existing structure at six Perkins Way with this new uh use number six one three, um, I thought the applicant, uh, his attorney laid out um very well, the findings that we would have to find. But, um, of course, I I will go through um one by one, um, very quickly, because I think he, I think hit on all of them one way or another. But uh clearly, with respect to the the first requirement, the requested use is listed in the new report table uh of use and regulations for use six one three, and the said use requires special permit. That's why we're here. Um, the proposed use will allow for temporary storage and warehousing. There isn't a demand for this, so it is desirable for the public convenience and welfare. Uh, the industrially zone building at six Perkins Way recently underwent a plan review. Um, and given the vehicle trips that we just um fleshed out a little bit, um, the use will clearly not create undue traffic congestion. Uh, requested use will not overload public water. It's for storage. It's a recently approved and constructed industrial building. It will not overload public water drainage or sewer. Um, any special regulations for the use set forth are fulfilled, and there are no special regulations for six one three. Um, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to their welfare or health. It was recently allowed under the amended amendment to the city ordinances approved by the city council um after determining that it was a compatible use for the district. Um, the proposed new use will not cause an ex uh an excess of that particular use, as the applicant said, because it's uh probably the maiden voyage for this. Um, the proposed use is in harmony with the intent of the ordinance as it's allowing storage only, and it uh it's consistent with the purpose, which was recently reviewed and amended. And then lastly, um, as demonstrated in the application for special permit, the proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner so as to admit a dangerous, noxious, injurious, or otherwise objectionable fire explosion, radioactive or other hazard, noise or vibration, smoke, dust, odor, or other form of environmental pollution. For those many reasons, um, I can support this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Delilah.
Uh, I think Mr. Moore did a great job of running us through the nine factors, and I too can support this uh application.
Thank you, Mr. Delilah, and uh, Mr. Chan.
Uh, due to previous comments, I can support this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chan and uh, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, this is a very benign, low-impact use. It certainly meets the nine criteria as outlined by Mr. Moore, so I certainly support it.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Uh, I too, um, I concur with my colleagues, and Mr. Moore outlined the nine elements uh wonderfully for the record, so I I I appreciate that as well. Uh, we'll uh and I can support the application as well. So we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and uh I will uh ask if a member of the ZBA has a motion.
This is Greg Bennet. I will move to approve application twenty twenty-one dash four one, six Perkins Way for a special permit.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Moore.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Motion made by Mr. Bennet, seconded by Mr. Moore, calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delilah.
Yes.
Mr. Chan. Mr. Chan.
And did you get me? Yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. The uh special permit uh on six Perkins Way is approved. Thank you, Attorney DeShanes and Mr. Wheeler. Uh, have a good evening and uh good luck to you both. All right, moving uh to our uh, well, that that concludes our public hearings. We're going to close that portion of the agenda and open up the business meeting. Um, we have the minutes of the meeting of six twenty-two before us. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes or any changes or comments to the draft minutes?
This is Mr. Delilah. I had one change to the draft minutes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
At the write-up, thank you, the uh the write-up on Seven Harbor Street. The second paragraph, the first line, Attorney DeShane said the modest proposal would have a de minimis, D E, not D I, uh, de minimis impact. That was the only change I had.
Okay. Um, thank you. Any other changes or comments? Do we have a motion then to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Great.
Uh, for, I should probably say what the minutes were. Uh, the minutes for
Six twenty.
Uh, the meeting at six, uh, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
Motion's made by Mr. Delilah and seconded by Mr. Moore, and this is a motion to approve the minutes of six twenty-two. Uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delilah.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton, I'm sorry, Mr. Chan.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, I have no other updates. Um, uh, Andy, do you have any other updates for the ZBA?
Uh, no, only the uh the discussion, of course, of the uh, just a reminder of all members, that there's a possibility of um uh at least some forty B discussions in in coming months potentially. Um, so we're looking into the details of that, and we'll obviously circle back as soon as we have more information, but um to the extent that um, to the extent that someone may be eligible to apply for a forty B permit, um, you would be the board issuing a so-called comprehensive permit um, for all the local permits that would be needed for the project. So uh, but since it's not something this board has done in some time, we, you know, we do a little refresher, I think, before that sort of hearing um, for you all. But um, I just wanted to give you a reminder. We will let you know when we get more details as to anything that might be coming from New England Development, uh, for the Waterfront West area and/or the Avalon Bay uh, references in the paper, um, or uh, the so-called Maskowitz property um, over by Turkey Hill, um, and the reservoir. Uh, there's been some discussion about a project there, although it's not clear whether that would be a forty B either. So uh, nothing else is of now, and I think, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Um, okay. So uh, finally, we have our annual election of officers. Um, we do this every year. We simply, um, we have to nominate and then vote on the election of officers. The uh, the three officer positions, of course, are chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. Uh, and uh, so I will uh, ask for any nominations uh, for those offices. And uh, then we can, uh, we, we can vote by uh, by a voice vote and include the election for the next year of the ZBA officer.
I'll nominate.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr.
Good.
Go ahead, Mr. Delisle.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, this is Mr. Delisle. I was going to say, should we uh, should we table this till the next meeting, um, in that Mr. Swanton isn't here?
Uh, we uh, Andy, can we table this, or do we have to do this this evening?
Um, it, the, I think your rules and regs call for that. I, I don't think it's going to kill anybody if you hold off to the next meeting, though.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've got no objection to it. Uh, and certainly, that's a good point. We, we might as well, uh, you know, include uh, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Swanton. Uh, so why don't we uh, put a pin in that, and we'll table the um, the election of officers to the uh, to our next meeting. And um, in the hopes that we have a full board then, and uh, hopefully that, that's the case. Um, any, does anyone object to us doing that?
No objection. Unless someone knows they're not going to be here for the next meeting, and then we just keep kicking the can down the road.
No, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
All right, um, let's uh, let's, then we can go ahead and do that. And I uh, just, I'll just uh, you know, point of uh, point of point of administrative order. I'll just, uh, as the chair, I will um, position uh, our agenda to reflect the inclusion of the annual election of officers at the end of our business meeting of our next published uh, ZBA here.
Excellent.
Okay, with that, we have no further business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Mr. Moore.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No oppositions. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Meeting's adjourned. Gentlemen, thank you, and ladies, thank you very much, and